Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April twenty-sixth meeting of the Board of Selectmen. If you would please join me to rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, now we have a weird delay. Don't mind us.
That's, you know what that's for?
Tech problems.
Got it.
We got the accent. Foul language. The delay means they can beep it out.
Yeah, no one knows what that button is.
With us, you don't know. Okay, first up, we actually have a surprisingly busy agenda with administrative work. First up are the minutes of the special meeting with the planning board where we basically just went into executive session on April twelfth. Move to accept those minutes as printed. Thank you, Steve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
So that's gonna be unanimous with one abstention. Thank you, David. Next up are the minutes of the regular meeting from April twelfth. So move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Patsy. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Three, zero, one. Next up, the minutes of the special meeting with FinCom from April thirteenth.
Let's go accept.
Thank you, David. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Patsy. Discussion. Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. We're gonna move over to community relations. Select President Zarovsky isn't feeling well, so I'm gonna read these for us. I didn't get a second. My glasses off and old. "The Charlton Police Department is enforcing distracted driving enforcement for the month of April with NHTSA federal funds through the EOPSS programs. Thank you to the chief and his team for keeping us safe." "Next up, mark your calendars for Saturday, April thirtieth, Charlton Earth Day, townwide cleanup and Earth Fest on the Common. National Earth Day theme this year is invest in the earth. Sign up for a road online beginning April first on Charlton Earth Day page or sign up in person on the Common April thirtieth. Cleanup is from eight AM to two PM and Earth Fest in the Commons from eleven AM to two PM. Educational vendors, live music, food trucks, games, and giveaways. Sounds like a lot of fun." "Town of Charlton, two thousand twenty-two Yardways Drop Off, brushing branches, grass clippings, and leaves. That's gonna be at the DPW. For those who don't know, that's at one hundred Flint Road. April twenty-third and thirtieth, along with May seventh and the fourteenth of this year, from ten AM to two PM. Please note, this is open to Charlton residents only." Is this something I know the board, along with the DPWs and others, have put in emphasis on the past years because not everyone has the woods in their backyard? So this is a nice thing for everybody. "CHPT's Walk at Little River is a nice little thing. The Historical Society President Frank Morrell will be presenting the history of the Fulling Mill at Little River, followed by a walk along Little River to the Fulling Mill ruins. That's gonna occur Saturday, May seventh, two thousand twenty-two, at ten AM. Again, that's at Little River, Fulling Mill Drive in Charlton. All are welcome and sponsored by the CharltonTrust.org. Think about going to that first and then come on by to the school to vote." Speaking of which, Charlton Town election, may have heard of it. Saturday, May seventh, from eight AM to eight PM is gonna be at the Heritage School. I cannot emphasize enough, we have a lot of excellent candidates this year. Again, the school committee are opposed, so please, regardless of whom you support, come on out and vote. The other part is the Charlton Annual Town Meeting, which I'm sure you will hear ad nauseam for the next few weeks. It will be Monday, May sixteenth, at seven PM at the Charlton Middle School. I will be closing the warrant tonight, but again, we're talking about thirty-five million dollar budget, along with zoning changes and a bunch of other things. So if you don't vote, someone is going to use your vote, so make sure you show up. Other announcements from the board?
Sure, just wanna add that Monday, May second will be the candidate's night prior to the election. I believe it's at the library.
Oh, actually, sorry, I didn't interrupt. They actually changed it to the senior center.
It's not the senior center. I believe it starts at six PM with a Q and A, meet the candidates. And for those who cannot make it, it's not even my show, but I wanna share what knows about it. For those who cannot make it, it will be televised on, I think, what'd they say, our YouTube TV channel?
I think so, yeah. Drew, are you doing that for us?
I'm trying for YouTube, but it will be replayed.
It'll be replayed no matter what? Thank you, Drew. And Selectman Singer, thank you for that. One thing to note, and this is not directed at Izzy and Nina, more so for the parents and other graduating seniors. Every year, the Selectmen offer scholarships. This year, to both, you know, anyone obviously lives in town. Unfortunately, we had no applicants this year. So Nina and Izzy, if you guys could make sure you speak to your underclassmen to let them know that, you know, next year would be a wonderful thing for them to try to get some free money from us. There are obviously some criteria, and I don't believe either one of you were able to apply this year, so I get that. But just again, it's always disappointing when, you know, we, when we try to help out with college funds and they go unused, so.
I don't like, I didn't even know. I didn't live in the sections.
Izzy.
It's like, it was like the old, um, schools.
Yep.
I was not a part of the old school.
So anyway, just something to think about. Again, those were distributed. Vote to our friends at Bay Path and at Shepherd Hill. So make sure your junior friends don't know them next year, please. Any other announcements from the board? Community relations. Anybody have anything they wanna talk about? Cool, right. Hearing none. We're going on to the appointments and resignations. Mr. Golis, if we could do some, a couple of appointments, please.
All right, so for kitchen assistant cook, the board is being asked to make the formal appointment of Ken Gudrow as the kitchen assistant slash cook. Mr. Gudrow previously held this position but had left due to personal reasons. Three applications were received. This is a twenty-two hour a week position at seventeen thirty-six an hour. I'd recommend the board make the appointment as requested.
I make a motion that we appoint Ken Gudrow as a cook, kitchen cooking assistant.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Count that as, I'm assuming, all right, I'm assuming I'm gonna count that as unanimous approval. Next up, special police officers. The chief is also here if you have any questions.
Police Chief Dowd is asking the board to appoint the following as special police officers for the town of Charlton. William Bowdre, William Bedard, Dan Brunel, Thomas Duffy, and Robert Green. I'd recommend the board make the appointments.
Thoughts of the board?
I make a motion, we appoint the five gentlemen noted.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Lacto. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. Any discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Next up is a resignation.
Attaches a letter of resignation from Joan, Joanne E. Powell, resigning as board of registrar as she no longer lives in town. The board should accept her resignation. We're reaching out to the Republican Town Committee for a recommendation on a new board of registrar appointment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Patsy. David, I need discussion. Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. We're a few minutes above our poll hearing. Any chance we can do the replacement of the auxiliaries under new business, six, one? I know the chief is here. Trying to help him out for once.
You know, once Bill starts the poll hearing, we're here all night.
All right, so attaches a letter from Chief Dowd stating that post required that this year those auxiliaries with the last names between A through H would need a bridge academy completed by seven one twenty-two. Next year posts will require I through P obtain the bridge academy by seven one twenty-three, and those with names ending Q through Z by seven one twenty-four. He's requesting the following positions be put in place. Special police officers, reserve officers, and traffic constables. So Chief, if you wanna delve in any further.
Yeah, you, get anything you wanna add?
Really all I got. It's just a post thing, we gotta call these people something and they don't want to use the phrase auxiliaries. Traffic control won't have the police powers, but they'll be used like a third tier, so we'll try to get people with police powers out there. But when we're out of options, we're out of options.
Any questions for the chief?
Yeah, yeah. As far as the traffic constables, who's, who's setting up that training for that? Or do you have any idea? Have they figured it out?
Well, there's really no, there could be regulations down the road or procedures, but right now, what's required is CPR first aid and obviously some instruction from people that are doing the job. But there may be, as we, all these communities transition into this, they may come out with something down the road. I just wanna be prepared for it, but right now, there's very little guidance.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the chief? Hearing none, I'm assuming we need a formal motion on it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
Yep.
Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Again, trying to help things out here, especially trying to help out the chief. Under VOS policy review, nine underscore one, the traffic and crowd management policy. If we wouldn't mind skipping down to that, then Chief, I think you can probably take off. Sorry, Andrew, I'm gonna skip over there.
Oh, no, no problem. So at the request of Chief Dowd, we've evaluated the current traffic and crowd management permit policy to address situations where large events fail to obtain the appropriate traffic details in advance through the process that's laid out. We've gone through it and recommended an amendment to this policy to allow the town to charge twice the normal detail rate for failure to apply for a traffic and crowd management permit in, for an event if a detail is required after it begins. So deferring to the board as to how you'd like to handle that.
So just for the board and those at home, basically what we're trying to do is formalize something a little bit more around when there are larger events in town. We're not trying to have people, you know, if you're having like a backyard party, we're not talking about that. We're talking about much larger events, and we wanna make sure, again, it goes back to this, this iteration's board's desire overall to be much more proactive versus reactive. So after consultations with the chief and others, I think it makes more sense to basically, I don't wanna say put people on warning, but to put events on notice that they have to recognize that if they're gonna need a detail, they should be doing it upfront. Because if not, it's gonna be much more problematic for them after. So that is the intent of this policy, not to punish anyone, but rather to reward them for their proactive good behavior and so that we don't have issues with both, both the police obviously having to go out there and/or residents calling to complain. So I don't know if anyone has any other questions, comments, or?
Just I think, I think it's good. Chief's been around for a while. We've had a lot of instances over the years at many different venues where they should've known. And they didn't, and it became a big problem, so I think this is a good idea.
Cool. Any other questions?
Are there any crowd limits set, or is that a, is it like above a hundred or something?
Yeah, there's, I think there's a number, isn't it?
This is just.
I just scanned back up, I'm sorry.
This is just a, this is just a detail fee though, not a requirement.
Right, and so, you know, the idea, it's not that we're, we're charging any additional fees or anything like that. It's just if you're anticipating on having an event and then, you know, you, you don't apply for the proper traffic permit. Essentially, the traffic control permit is to kind of give us some warning to give you guidance if you are gonna need a detail for it. A lot of times, people might apply and not need a detail. But if you never went through the process and you have five hundred people show up and they're all showing up the exact same time and all of a sudden they're calling that they need a traffic, a, a, a detail at the site, or a neighbor calls and they show up and you go, hey, you really need a detail here? Well, this gives us the authority to basically charge that organizer twice what they would normally be charged for that same detail.
Okay, and by the way, this is just an expansion of the existing policy that we have.
Should we?
Correct, exactly. This is also our way of playing softball with the event coordinators in town to say, we're watching, so do us a favor and don't cause us any headaches. But Patsy, I'm sorry, I think you had a question.
Should we say up to two times, or so there's some discretion? Or is it, is it better just to have it solid, so there's no, just so?
I think it's better so it's solid, so no one thinks you're playing favorites where, oh, I was charged lesser more than this person. Everyone just gets charged the same.
And it's kind of assuming that, you know, by the time that the detail's required, the town's really kind of already behind the eight ball of trying to get the detail in place. So you probably already should've had the detail there two hours before.
So we're paying possibly a different officer to, to, overtime or whatever to come.
Right.
Any further thoughts from the board or questions for the chief? Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Before the chief leaves, anything that we can harass him about? Hearing none. Chief, you're good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, chief. You owe us one for like getting you out of here at any minute. All right, we're gonna move over back to, and thank you for your flexibility on that, so, you know, try to help out when people are here as best they can. Next up is gonna be the poll hearing. Selectman Singer, don't say a word. Let's get, sorry. Just gonna get to the hearing notice. How many pages is a book this week? Three hundred? No, one hundred, one hundred forty pages.
Oh, I know, I know.
In our book. Schedule appointments, here we go. "The Charlton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, at six forty-five PM at the Charlton Town Hall, meeting room one, thirty-seven Main Street, Charlton, Mass. via Zoom. To act on a request from National Grid and Rise New England Inc., requesting permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. T-Hall Road, National Grid to install one JO pole on T-Hall Road, beginning at a point approximately thirteen hundred feet east of the center line of the intersection of Prindle Road and continuing approximately twenty feet in a south direction. Installed pole number nine dash fifty on T-Hall Road, roughly thirteen hundred feet from Prindle Road, and about a hundred five feet away from existing pole number ten for a new customer at house number fifty-seven. Pole to be located to the left of house number fifty-seven. They're also asking for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and building as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your wish to be heard in this manner should appear on the date and time specified via Zoom or submit concerns in writing." I don't believe we had anything in writing. Is anyone here for the public hearing?
I don't see anybody with noted Nash, as National Grid on there.
Is there anyone online via Zoom who has some concerns on this one? Kinda raise your hand or give us a chat or something? All right, this one, basically reviewing it, it's pretty innocuous. I mean, again, in case those are wondering, JO just means joint own pole. It, you know, it's basically our standard request that is given to us from National Grid and contractors, so. What are the board's wishes? If you have questions, we can answer them, we can defer it. I know in the past, sometimes when National Grid didn't show up, we punished them by saying that you had to wait. You know, I probably recommend that we just kinda, you know, move forward, but obviously it is, I defer to the board. We can close the public hearing regardless, though.
If nobody's here to talk against it, I think, I think we could close the hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Thanks, Vice Chairman Lacto. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Discussion. Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous on closure of the public hearing. Do we want to approve the request? Or deny, for that matter?
I make a motion, we approve the request.
Thanks, Patsy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Andrew, can we just send a note to National Grid, remind them that we really like them here? All right, fifteen minutes ahead of schedule, which makes me happy. Let's move down to new business subitem two, the creation of the Disabilities Committee. As a reminder, this is an offshoot of when we had discussions around potentially adopting a new MGL. It was the board's wishes that we look for an alternative, so we're just kinda bringing this in now, and Andrew, anything you wanna add?
Nope, just wanted to note that we did look into how many handicapped tickets or handicap parking tickets have been issued. Since two thousand seventeen, we've only issued one.
What we could do, just for the sake of discussion, is if it was, if the board was so inclined, we could motion to form a committee of, let's say, five people, although that number could be determined. I know, Andrew, I think you would recommend it no more than five. We could adjust that number and, I'm sorry, the Disabilities Committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Moving around again.
Yeah. Sorry, this is new business subitem two. The thought being that this would allow us the opportunity to at least advertise for a committee, and then we could actually work with them based upon their recommendations on what authority they may want, but obviously would be under the discretion of the board as to exactly what it is. But I think it's, I think it would be nice to say, come back to us with, with suggestions, and they'll have the conversation. Again, that's just one idea, but I defer to the board as always.
I make a motion that we form a committee. Up to five people.
Do I have a second, at least for discussion?
Sure.
I have a second from Mr. Singer. Any, any discussion on this one?
I go, I know, I just go back to again, seeing what we get for volunteers to be on the committee.
Absolutely. Yeah, because if we don't get anybody, then obviously makes the committee a moot point. Further discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. So what I'd probably recommend with the board's permission is that we ask Andrew to advertise in our, in our usual spots and seeing, and basically see who volunteers.
And there was this one person who reached out specifically, and you'll reach out to her, just to let her?
Just thought of the last one, it looks like somebody from National Grid was on. For some reason, they're not populating in the attendees list, so.
All right, Laura, we're gonna give you a break on that one. Don't worry about it, you guys are fine. Have a good night, Laura, you're good.
Can you take a vote back now?
I take back everything I said about National Grid until the next storm. All right, next up is the second round of the ARPA grants, again, under new business item three. Andrew, I know you had sent out some information on this.
Yeah, so just to outline, you know, that this was essentially round two of the program. We did see a significant increase in the number of applicants under this round. The EDC reviewed all applications, all, all seventeen applications, and then the applications that were also reviewed under round one that were not fully funded. The EDC recommended thirteen awards from round two and one additional award from the round one applicants. So the recommendations were two thousand dollars to the pasture prime players, twenty-five hundred dollars to vinyl underground science shop, six thousand dollars to AC home restoration, fifteen thousand five hundred to Fay Mountain Farm, six thousand dollars to O'Brien Home Contracting, ten thousand dollars to CMS parent, Music Parent Association, eight thousand dollars to Mother Hen Childcare, twenty thousand dollars to Dad's Breakfast and Lunch, nine thousand dollars to Charlton Boy Scout troop.
What troop number?
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
Bless you.
I will double check that number. I just did not write it down.
Show off.
Sorry.
Two in town.
Seventy-five hundred dollars toward the YMCA of Central Massachusetts, Camp Foskett, eight thousand dollars to Inspired Fitness Studio, thirty-five hundred dollars to Garan Electrical Service, twenty thousand dollars to Lon's RS Plus, and six thousand dollars to the Raze Foundation. If all were awarded, that would leave eighteen, that's a total of twenty, a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in round two grants. It would leave eighteen thousand dollars left of the two hundred thousand dollar appropriation for round, for the remaining round.
Questions from the board to Andrew, or for that matter, Steve, I believe you served on, as our EDC representative?
I did not take part in.
Oh, you didn't take part in this one?
Not in this one.
All right, so any questions for Andrew on this one? All right, hearing none. I have a motion for discussion at least.
I make a motion to ex, to accept the EDC recommendation.
Works for me. Do I have a second for discussion?
Second.
Okay, let's have discussion, if any.
Yeah, Patsy, the, the Boy Scout troop, that's, they're going for an enclosed trailer.
Yeah, we.
With decal. So you might know which troop that is.
There's just two, there's just two Boy Scouts in.
No, give me one second. All right, I.
Yep. They can probably share it.
Boy Scouts can be very competitive, I don't know.
Yeah, they are.
All right, do we wanna wait on that from Andrew? Are we okay taking a vote at this point?
I was just curious what all of the, are the, are the details, so?
Sorry, three, three, eight.
Three, three, eight.
I'd sent out a separate link to you guys with all the application packets.
It was in a Dropbox?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the last, the last, or this last page on here just kind of gives a brief program outline and what's the use of those funds were, kind of slated to be, or what the asks were. So as you see, there's a lot more requested money than, than was actually awarded, but the thought being that at least the portion would go, for, a lot of them would either go toward one of the requests or offset total cost.
I did, I did look over the, I didn't attend that meeting, we were at another meeting, but we, there were several that weren't filled out correctly. And those were just pretty much taken off the top of the list right at the beginning.
So again, we have a motion and a second. Again, we can take a few minutes in case anyone has any, you know, that they wanna take a further look at this, or? Let me, just some other boards versus.
I, the EDC, I know they put tons of time. I heard about the hours and hours and hours of reviewing apps, so.
Anything concerning on, on the right side of the, of the table? Not seeing any. All right, let's put out the vote. We have motion, we have second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, three, one passes. All right, we're gonna skip over the TA review for now, Andrew, if that's all right. Don't wanna rush that one. Let's go under old business, subitem one, the annual town meeting, closing of the warrant. Again, for those at home, as a reminder, we had kept this open so that, as a compromise, for lack of a better word, along with the friends of the Council on Aging and others who are, who are interested, they have in fact, or I should say, under a citizen's petition, they have brought forth a funding request to purchase Charlton furniture for the use of a, of a new senior center. That will be printed as Article twenty-one, I believe, in the warrant. There were also some updated zoning, I think.
Yeah, so the biggest change was basically that the planning boards originally had filed their zoning changes as one article.
Yeah, they split them up, right?
But then they ended up splitting up that as, as three, so that's why the number, the manials changed a little bit.
So the warrant as presented to us will be inclusive of department requests, inclusive of the planning board, as well as one, I think only one, citizen's petition. And again, twenty-one coming up for May sixteenth. So if, are there any questions on, on just closing the warrant for now? Can I get a motion to close the warrant?
Same.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
No, no.
Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That is unanimous. The warrant is officially closed. Andrew, when, how can, how soon can we get up a version with the budget and everything else, or really like everything?
Tomorrow.
Thank you. For those at home, are the town warrant, the actual physical or PDF copy of it will be up online if you can take a look at and start to examine all the different articles. Again, I cannot stress enough how important May sixteenth will be. Under old business, number two, postcard for annual town meeting and election, and there's an asterisk, or at least I'm putting an asterisk on this. As a reminder, last year, for the, I don't know if it's the first time, but the first time in a while, we had sent out a postcard to every single household in town, reminding them about town meeting. The thought is, or the question for the board is, would we like to do that again, at least for town meeting? And maybe potentially the election. Again, it's relatively short money, and that way literally every single voter or voter household will get this. So no one should be able to say, I didn't know about the election, or I didn't know about the town meeting.
So this cost of twenty-three, twenty-two, that's just for one mailing? Or is that going to cover the town meeting for spring and fall and election, or just?
That's one mailing.
One mailing.
So does that?
If we do it three times, it's gonna be seven grand.
Can the card, since the election and the meeting are so close, can the town, can the card actually say, you know, have both dates on it?
So if, if you look at what we have here, it's actually front and back.
Yep.
Okay.
So it would have, it, I kind of have it, everything kind of queued up that if the board was to support it, I'd let the printer know right after the meeting, then they would basically send it out and have it out by the end of this week. So that way they'd have the notice of the election and the town meeting in advance.
So basically, we can get this processed tomorrow at the end of the day, if the board is so inclined.
Not that you, I, I, how many times have we all heard that we didn't even know that there was elections? We didn't know if there was a town meeting, and?
And we've done this before.
And so if that's their issue, that we should've advertised more, then I, I feel like the residents wouldn't mind us spending, you know, a couple thousand to?
They wouldn't. The only point I'll make is we, we've actually done this before. We've done the enhanced signage, we've offered daycare, we've done the reverse calling and texting, we've done this, the, the mailings. It did not increase turnout. So I'm fine with trying it one last time. But my view would be, look, if we do it and we still have the same turnout we always have, and we've exhausted everything, and we're spending taxpayer money on top of more taxpayer money, you know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing repeatedly for like a different outcome, that would be the case. So I'll support it one last time, but if it's the same as everything else, then there's no point in continuing.
All right, can I get a motion at least on the postcard to be inclusive of May seventh and May sixteenth respectively?
Yeah.
I got a motion?
Second.
Second, Patsy. Any further discussion on this piece?
No.
Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. One special request from Select President Zarovsky, once again cannot make it this evening. Long story short.
That's the card.
Right.
This is the card?
Yeah, yeah, this is the card. So some of us, from time to time, had actually purchased our own little signs that said town meeting, and, you know, we just draw it in, like, whatever day it is, and then we, and then we put them out there. Basha had done some legwork on her own and had requested that the board, for again, relatively short money, via a local vendor, purchase like ten to twelve signs that are similar, but they would be town-owned, and that we would just put them out, you know, like the week before the election, make them either erasable, or we could hang something over it that'll just change the dates. Personally, I, I think it's a good idea.
Oh, yeah.
Because again, it's relatively short money, they're, they're reusable signs, and again, I think the more we can emphasize to people.
Austin size.
I think they're only twenty-four, I think they're like twenty-four by thirty, they're a standard campaign sign, and I think they were like a hundred, I think they were like a hundred fifty bucks.
Breaking the sign by law.
No, because we can't do that. Only selectmen, or a certain selectman can try to do that. Not me for the, so, yeah, I think it was around a hundred fifty, three hundred dollars.
Cut it in half for the two of the same, two legal size.
So I personally think it's, it's, it's a good idea. So I personally think it's, it's, it's a good idea. It's, again, very short money to have additional publicity specifically for town meeting.
Yep.
And reusable.
And they're reusable, exactly. It's, it's a one-time thing.
I, I think that's gonna be the biggest bang for the buck outside of social media.
And we'll figure out the prime spots.
Yeah, exactly.
Library.
Uh, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is unanimous. So again, you know, Andrew, we'll say up to like three hundred bucks or something like that, just, you know, figure it out. Look at this, seven PM, Stafford Street Corridor Study. Uh, Jeff Durk is coming in. So for those at home, as a reminder, this has to do with Stafford Street Center Depot. We all know that there have been multiple discussions, issues, accidents and unfortunate deaths, uh, over the years. Uh, this board had taken proactive action as best we could to have better conversations around that intersection and obviously the intersecting streets to either control traffic, uh, speed, you know, things along those lines to, to help mitigate and mediate any true issues. So we engaged Jeff and company to come in, give us some proposals. Uh, so I want to thank Mr. Durk for coming in. Jeff, do you prefer Jeff or Jeffrey?
Uh, either one is fine with me. Thank you and I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman.
Cool. Alright, so Jeff, you know, I think, I, I think most of us, if not all, had read through this in detail. I think it's some great work. What I would ask is that we stayed light on the quantitative metrics and rather heavy on what the proposed solutions could be. And if the board has specific questions or those online around your quant work, then we could definitely ask them. But, um, you know, looking at, uh, you know, multi-varied analysis won't actually help anybody.
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the, uh, the opportunity you presented to me tonight. Uh, and I think I know when I slow down, the board's been very, um, efficient in using the time that you have tonight, so I'll, I'll try to be likewise, um, efficient as well. So just by way, I'm gonna just do a high-level overview and, and as the chair had mentioned, I'll be happy to answer any detailed questions that you might have. Um, so just in terms of, um, just some basic information, of course, the purpose of the corridor study was addressed with, with the chair had mentioned, which is, you know, we have some issues with respective motor vehicle crashes happening along the corridor and really what we're trying to understand is, you know, what may be some of the causes and then ultimately present to you some recommendations, um, to deal with that. Uh, so we did collect traffic volumes, pedestrian and bicycle information in the area. Um, the only thing I want to mention on that is, you know, we are obviously still having the effects of COVID. So everything that's been presented in our study has been adjusted. We have historic traffic counts so that we can, you know, try to replicate conditions on the roadway to, um, to be a point where had COVID not happened, here's what things might, might look like in the area. And we did look at a future planning horizon, so as we're making recommendations for you, um, what we're trying to do is make sure the things that we recommended don't have life, well, they have life for today to address the conditions, but also looking in the future. Um, I know as the town is, is growing and we've had the opportunity to work on several projects in the town, we want to make sure we're planning not just for now, but also for what things may look like in the future. So we have taken into account some of the large development projects that have been approved along the Route twenty corridor in the area. So in terms of high-level findings, um, traffic operations were generally acceptable, meaning as we look at delays in queuing at intersections, uh, we didn't see anything that was of concern with the exception of the Center Depot Road intersection, which is also a high crash location, so there's probably a relationship between the two things that are happening. There are people getting impatient and so they start taking, uh, what we'll call less than acceptable gaps. So instead of waiting for traffic to pass by and having a gap between cars so you can pour, when you get frustrated, you tend to accept, you know, less or smaller gaps, less time for people to react and that causes crashes. So there, there's probably a relationship between those two. And I think most importantly, the two intersections at Brookfield Road and Center Depot Road are very high crash locations, as the chair had mentioned. Um, I'll talk about that in a minute, but they both have about fifty crashes over a five-year period or ten crashes per year and the crash rates are well in excess of what mass DOT has for, would be expected for um, typical crashes at a, at an unsignalized intersection in this area, so in, in the Charlton area. So this just shows a study area that we evaluated, so Stafford Street Corridor in yellow, basically extending including Route twenty to the Center Depot Road intersection, so that's where we spent our time collecting data and understanding the roadway network. Uh, this just shows existing conditions in the area. Uh, the only thing I really want to point out on the slide here is where you see the orange lines, that's where there are sidewalks and that does get to some of our recommendations as to mobility in the area. So this Charlton City area, which basically Stafford, uh, Route thirty-one, Maple Street here in the middle, what you see is there's a lack of sidewalks, so you do see some recommendations from us about dealing with kind of that pedestrian center uh, and some improvements that might be made. So focusing on the crashes at the two intersections, so this is the Center Depot Road intersection, I started with this one because this is where we tend to have more severe crashes happening. So this shows, it's a collision diagram that shows where all the crashes are happening, um, at the intersection and it allows us to look at patterns. And so there is, this intersection had forty-seven crashes over a five-year period. Um, the crash rate, as I mentioned, which is a measure of the number of crashes that are happening uh, versus the amount of traffic going through the intersection. Um, and so that, that's where we get a crash rate, we can compare it to mass DOT averages for the, for the Charlton area. The crash rate at this intersection is three to four times higher than the mass DOT average, so it's, it's significant in terms of the number of crashes. Three-quarters of the crashes or seventy-five percent are angle-type crashes and the majority of those crashes are basically, it's a southbound, uh, vehicle on Center Depot Road, so they're traveling south towards Route twenty being struck by a vehicle that's traveling northeast or towards Worcester on the Stafford Street approach. So that's where the majority of the crashes are happening at the location, so as we're, you know, looking at ways to try to address that crash pattern. Uh, fortunately or unfortunately, sixty-two percent of the crashes are, are property damage only. So it, they're not something that results in injury, however, we still have a balance that are, are personal injury at that intersection.
Hey Jeff. Now, if we look at the. Jeff, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jeff. Just for those at home who just have it, just to give context, imagine you're driving from Ronnie's and, and on the other side, uh, you're coming up going towards Worcester on, on Stafford. That's where we're talking around, like, you know, go, go, going there, you know, just to give, yeah, Jeff, just to give local landmarks to the folks.
Yeah, that's perfect, Mr. Chairman, exactly. So that, that is where the predominant crashes are happening. So now looking at the Brook, Brookfield Road intersection, this, this intersection has fifty-one crashes in total over that five-year period. The crash rate at this intersection is six to seven times higher than the mass DOT average, so it's quite significant. Again, eighty-six percent of the crashes are angle-type crashes and what I ask you to look at is this over here, this, this represents, so this is a southbound motorist on Brookfield Road heading towards Route twenty, uh, colliding with a motorist that again is traveling towards Worcester on Stafford Street and the crashes are happening at that location there, so it's, it's southbound Brookfield Road versus northbound Stafford Street. Mostly angle-type crashes at this location, because of the all-way stop control, they're slow speed crashes, so the majority of the crashes are property damage only at that intersection, unlike the Center Depot Road intersection where we have more higher travel speeds along Strat, Stafford Street. So as we look at those crash patterns and just our overall findings, uh, the geometry in terms of the width of Stafford Street, um, it is appropriate for the volume of traffic, which it gets about six thousand vehicles per day, two-way traffic over a twenty-four hour period. Um, it does have a posted speed limit of forty. What I would mention is, is you get beyond Center Depot, between Center Depot and Brookfield, the majority of the vehicles are traveling closer to forty-five miles an hour, so it's, it's within a five mile an hour pace of the posted speed limit. Uh, so it's pretty typical of what we'd, we'd expect. As you head towards Center Depot Road, the speed limit does drop down to thirty miles an hour. However, as they travel, as those vehicles travel through the intersection, they do not decrease speed. So they're still traveling at forty to forty-five miles an hour, even though the speed limit drops in that area. So recommendations for pedestrian mobility, as I mentioned, we're really focusing on the Charlton City area. So we are recommending that consideration be given to completing the sidewalk infrastructure in that area to make it walkable, make it feel like kind of the, the village type of center that, that exists there today. Uh, that would also allow for potential opportunities for the Worcester Regional Transit Authority, their bus goes by on Route twenty, but the providing sidewalks would provide an opportunity potentially for them to divert the bus, maybe turn right up Maple Street or up Route thirty-one, travel down Stafford to Route twenty and then continue on its route towards uh, South Bridge, but it does provide that connectivity opportunities, uh, for the bus route. Uh, in terms of bicycle mobility, uh, any opportunity, as you look at long-range planning to install bicycle lanes on Stafford Street would be something that would be advisable. It's not something that would be easy and it would be costly, and so we've said that that's a long-term improvement. And then the last set of recommendations, and these, these are the ones really to focus on, are the safety-related items, cause that would, at the end of the day, that's what the purpose of the study was. We do know that the town has been proactive in engaging the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. We've supplied them information, uh, to assist them with their assessment of study, of safety in this area. Uh, the first thing we've recommended is that at those two high crash locations is that a road safety ought to be conducted and I believe the regional planning agency is, is doing that. Uh, that is important because that allows the town to unlock state funding to implement the recommendations from our study. So that way it doesn't need to be necessarily monies that are from the town, but the state will provide funding for safety-related improvements, but you need to have that road safety audit undertaken first and I believe the regional planning agency is, is assisting with that. So that, that's a great benefit and our study will serve as kind of a, a basis for them as they go out and do their additional studies in the area. So the first thing is, uh, just general maintenance, trim and maintain roadside vegetation. Uh, my experience with the town is they've always been good about doing this on the local roadways, uh, in implementing these, these type of maintenance type of activities, so we, we'd recommend that that be done. Uh, I also mention that because as we look at those crashes at the intersections, some of them may be caused, uh, due to site distance limitations that can be addressed through some vegetation trimming at both of the intersections. There are sections of the roadway in Stafford Street, uh, that do have cable guardrail, uh, guide rail, that's no longer allowed. So again, as a, as a maintenance type of, of, uh, proactive measure, uh, you should look at replacing those with steel uh, guide rail, uh, which is the, the current standard, that's just better in redirecting vehicles, uh, back to the roadway. Uh, we do have recommendations to maintain and supplement and replace signs of pavement markings, specifically at Brookfield Road. Uh, that's under all-way stop control today, so that's basically absent putting a signal in, which you, you, it doesn't meet the criteria to do that. Um, what you would want to do is replace the existing signs that are there uh, with more high-visibility signs of pavement markings, um, so we have some recommendations for doing that at that intersection. Along Stafford Street itself, uh, potentially adding some, uh, edge-of-line pavement markings, this would address uh, basically keeping people properly positioned in their lanes. Uh, that can be done as a part of routine maintenance on the roadways. And I know the town has undertaken that along some of the other roadways in the town. And then power station road, we have some recommendations to realign that intersection, as you know, it comes in and is skewed. So some opportunities to do that. Now we'll look at some concept plans just very quickly. Uh, so this plan here shows, this is the Route twenty intersection. So here's the power station road, I do need to remind everyone kind of what the geometry looks like. It's a very wide-open intersection, so it creates some conflict points that could be addressed by, you know, reducing some of the pavement area there, channelizing it a little bit better. Uh, we do know that the fire station exists just to the north of the intersection there, so, you know, making sure that even though we, we have opportunities to reduce the pavement, fire trucks needs to still be able to respond and churn at that intersection, uh, which would be able to be accomplished with some realignment there. So this intersection here is the Brookfield Road inter- intersection. You see it's already under all-way stop control. Our recommendations are replacing the, uh, stop lines with, um, high-visibility pavement markings and then installing advanced intersection head warning signs on both sides of the roadway uh, with a supplemental plaque that just says Brookfield Road, uh, Head. That has been shown as a, as a safety countermeasure that enhances the a motorist's awareness of an intersection ahead and that there's gonna be conflicting traffic. Um, and so we've recommended that that take place. And always we cringe when we see an intersection like this, dangerous intersection ahead. Um, we, we've recommended that be removed and replaced with an appropriate sign. Uh, that sign actually no longer exists in the, uh, state manual and uniform traffic control devices. Uh, what you want to do is fix the problem, not tell people there's a problem. Um, so we've recommended some, some countermeasures that, that deal with that. Now focusing on Center Depot Road, so we, we've developed four, three recommendations for the intersection, starting from kind of a uh, low-cost approach that, that's effective and it's à la Brookfield Road. Uh, so the first thing that we would look at is implementing always stop control at that intersection. Um, it does meet the criteria, there are criteria that you look at in terms of traffic volumes and congestion to see if always stop control is an appropriate measure. It does meet those criteria. So a short-term improvement or immediate-term improvement that could be implemented, um, as a low-cost measure is to implement always stop control at the location, and this is what we've shown on the plan here. Um, it does seem counterintuitive that it would improve traffic operations, but it actually does, because what happens here is, you know, in theory, everyone gets a chance to go through the intersection equal. So it balances out the assignment of the right-of-way at the intersection and it will also result in a slowing of travel speeds, uh, going through here, because now the Stafford Street traffic, which is traveling at a high speed through this intersection and as you saw, those collisions with, um, the southbound motors on Center Depot Road, this would address those collision patterns, it's gonna slow traffic down, it's gonna better assign the vehicle a right-of-way at the intersection. And I think it's an immediate-term measure that could be done at a low cost to address the crashes that are happening here.
Hey Jeff, let me ask you this, because we've been told in the past, and maybe it's been too anecdotal, uh, or not, that coming down Stafford, heading, heading downtown, if you would, I'm assuming going west, that that hill coming down, that, that's problematic with, with like a stop sign. Do you think that, that we can work around that?
You, you can. What we've shown you is that when you have a site distance limitation such as that, you deal with these advanced warning signs to let people know that there's a stop sign ahead, and so we've shown that on the, on the plan here, and that would be installed in advance of the site distance limitation. So if the crest of the hill is causing a site distance issue, you position the sign far enough advanced that people know that there's a stop sign ahead and that they, that there may be vehicles that are stopped and queued up at that location. So it, it's really a matter of using proper design to position the signs in such a way that you're giving the motorist advanced notice. And it could be that there's, you know, more than one of these advanced signs so that people know, slow down, you're coming up to the intersection here, then there's, then you let, there's a stop sign ahead, so you're basically trying to do it in two stages where they're reducing the speed and then being, being aware of the fact that there may be queued vehicles at a stop sign, so it's really dealing with proper design.
Any concern with the winter months, whether they be icy, snowy, et cetera, but I'm, but what I'm hearing is that if we give them enough notice, they'll be able to slow down and probably won't go sliding through the intersection or trying to rerun somebody.
That, that's exactly right. So you'd use that, you would design in a way to address, um, those local conditions that you had mentioned and just provide the proper signs to be able to do that.
Well, on this one, you had me at hello, so as long as DOT and or whomever else agrees to this, in my not-so-humble opinion, we should do this yesterday. But anyway, Jeff, keep going though, we'll, we'll have more questions for you.
So the next, so as we start to go up to the next higher level, we've shown a traffic signal alternative. I don't think it's appropriate and it, and in fact, the volumes do not suggest that you could even put a traffic signal in here. Um, so the only way that you could ever install a traffic signal here is if the crashes became so severe or so numerous, then you would exceed a criteria based on the crash, um, uh, crash works. However, the, what's critical about that is you have to start here before you can go here. So even if you wanted to install a signal based on crash experience, you have to do this first, see if this works. If this doesn't work, then you can go here. And then the last measure is the modern roundabout. Now, this, you know, this is, if, when you, if you want to look at reducing angle-type crashes, this is it. Because what this does is, there's no, there's no angles in here in terms of vehicles crossing paths. So the roundabout physically puts that center circle there, so that what it does is you don't have angle-type crashes because you've, you've limited in terms of the, the number of conflicts and significantly reduced them. The, the caveat to this is you could do this at this intersection, I believe there's enough room to be able to do it. But to the chair's point, we run into issues when you have a hill coming into this location, because we, if you have vehicles that are coming into this neighborhood, they're slowing down, we need to be aware of the fact that if there's a site distance limitation, we may need to deal with that first. We can do the advanced warning signs coming in, uh, so that there are some proper design measures that we could use. This would be more appropriate in a, in a, in environments such as this, that's more rural in nature than doing the, the signalized intersection, because no one's going to expect this on, on Stafford Street, so you may cause more problems in terms of expectations than something like this. However, again, not to belabor it, you need to start here. And so if you start here, then you'll look at this, this isn't viable, you might want to look at this, but this is a, this is a very large, expensive project and you would need to deal with drainage and other features, but, but this would be more appropriate than the signalized intersection. So, so that's it, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna stop sharing and I'll, I'll turn it back to the board, I'll be, as I said, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And as far as, um, now that C, CRMP is looking at it, did they give you a timeline? Cause this sounds like something we're, we had, we had an urgency for and, and I don't, uh, do you think they'd, they'd complete in six months, a year, three years?
So, so the road safety audit itself can be done in a couple, it can be done in a couple of months. Um, and, and it's a couple of months only because. And it's a couple of months only because they they need to produce, they they work with the police department to obtain the crash records. They have to get that all approved by Mass DOT and then they undertake the road safety audit. We have a few of those that are ongoing right now. And it really, from start to finish, it's no more than a couple of months. And the regional planning agency may be able to do it, you know, in a month or a month and a half. But I think two months is realistic.
But but then then funding is a whole nother story if we decided to go with the roundabout.
Correct, yeah, absolutely. Something that what you would do is then advance some level of design of it, conceptual design to put some cost to it. And then you'd ask the state for funding to to implement that. But the first part of it is really to unlock the money is to have the road safety audit undertaken. Then you would undertake the grant application process. What I've seen in many instances is what communities do is they implement the always stop control while you're applying for the grant to implement the next solution to it. So you're addressing kind of a short term improvement, which is fix the crash problem by installing always stop control. Then you're working through the grant application process so then you can implement the final solution. So that gives you that interim step and addresses the immediacy of the crashes.
And the, as far as if we decided to do this on our own, the state would allow us to put in the four way stop orders or certain?
You as the board are, I believe you act as the road commissioners for the town because that's a local roadway under local jurisdiction. So I believe chapter 90 monies are allowed for use on Stafford Street because of its functional classification. So the only caveat is the town can absolutely have, the board is the authority, is the road commissioners for the town to enact the regulations on town ways. The only thing with respect to always stop control is if that's put in place, the warrants analysis for always stop control needs to be done. Which all the data we've collected is all that's needed to do it. So that's not a a large hurdle to do that or costly. And I say that because you can't implement a traffic control measure on a roadway that doesn't meet standards or engineering standards. Always stop being one of those. So you have to have the, basically you need a professional engineer such as myself to write a memo that says we've undertaken the warrants analysis. The intersection meets the warrants and that implementation of always stop control is an appropriate measure to address the crashes that are happening there. Then the board can authorize it, go ahead and adopt it. And chapter 90 monies can still be used for the roadway because you haven't violated any engineering standards.
Let's go selectman singer.
Thank you. So Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but for the most part, short of the multimillion dollar option. Yeah, we'd have to do the four way stops and the enhanced signage as a first step anyway. For the most part, the recommendation is as short term, we're talking sight lines. Which for people at home, that's basically trimming back foliage, trees, branches away from the edges of the road and the corners to enhance visibility and enhance road markings and signage. And I appreciate Jeff pointing this out because we were actually told this months ago by Mass DOT. So my question is, did we already have the road safety audit done? Because months and months ago, and Jeff just predates you, we went to Mass DOT and asked them for solutions exactly as we've asked you. And they came back to us and they basically said, short of multimillion dollar improvements, that would be a long term down the road, not ready for it yet. They're recommending what we do first and always to do right now is the sight lines, the enhanced markings and the enhanced signage. So that to Mr. Borowski's point, we would have liked to have done this yesterday and we could have. So I appreciate the investment in in Jeff's company to basically confirm what we were told months ago by Mass DOT was actually correct.
I think it's a lot of different years ago.
No.
Couple of years. I don't remember Mass DOT ever telling us to put a four way stop sign.
Mass DOT, Mass DOT's terminology was enhanced signage, enhanced markings, sight line. So enhanced signage, if I'm not mistaken, would include those signs. That's exactly what they were saying we do. We didn't do it.
I I thought they, I thought they, I thought I had heard and I wasn't on the board then, but I thought I had heard they they didn't like the idea of a four way stop because of the hill.
I don't think it was that long ago, I'm pretty sure Bill was on the board at the time. Maybe it does predate you, but.
All the years blended together at this point.
I know.
Yeah, I know, they did, yeah.
So whether it was months ago or the last few years, it was actually very recent. But very recently, we asked Mass DOT for a solution to this and basically got the same suggestions that we got from Jeff. So a lot of time lost, you know, Jeff's confirmed, you know, a lot of the steps that should be taken. I'm gonna run out for a second and come back, but I'm just gonna leave you. My thoughts are we, you know, everyone had their conversation. My request would be to have Andrew contact Jerry, our highway superintendent, and come back to us with a plan of how he can begin to address, you know, the first phase of the enhanced signage, enhanced markings and sight lines. Which to Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but that basically is concurrent what we were told before from Mass DOT. Take these steps first and if that doesn't alleviate the problem, then we can go to further steps. But we gotta, we gotta take these steps.
As as long as we can prove that 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 other engineering study has already been completed.
Well, I'll ask the other question. Was that, was that an actual road safety audit that Mass DOT did for us? Or was it just here's Mass DOT's recommendations?
I think there's a few things that we have to figure out. One is, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but basically for all intents and purposes, you have the study that we need to execute the four way stop.
Yeah, what I would suggest, I would prepare for for the board through through Andrew. The always stop control warrants analysis, just a quick memo that just basically says, here's the criteria and here's how that intersection meets the criteria. So then at least you'll have that piece that you would need to the extent that the board wants to move forward with the always stop control.
Thank you, Jeff. The other question that I had about it though is that, you know, we've all driven down there way too many times and often, you know, probably gotten hit too many times. The actual physical, this is gonna sound like a silly question, but the actual physical stop lines on Center Depot, they seem to be pulled back from the intersection. Should we push those forward?
Yes, that that's our recommendation as well. And the same thing goes at Brookfield.
Appropriate, same, right.
You'd want to, because that that gets to your point of the sight lines. Because sort of what you're doing is if you put them too far back, everyone's gotta inch forward. And then, you know, they get too far beyond where you want them to be. You'd rather have the stop line put to the place where you want them to stop. That gives them better sight lines.
Thanks, Jeff. Patsy, good?
No, I agree. I think we should move forward as 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 soon as possible.
Sooner, absolutely, sooner the better.
So I think there's a couple of motions we could, again, just for the board's pleasure, we could play around with. One, I think regardless, and Jeff, this is fantastic, seriously, you did, like, you and your team, awesome job. If you need a referral, you know, kick it over to us.
Thank you very much.
That being said, and Andrew, by the way, this is all you, we all know that, so don't worry. That's, so we would want that memo from you. Now, what the board, depending upon its wishes, what we could do is basically instruct, for lack of a better word, Andrew to immediately start working on a budgeting plan to get a four way stop sign in in there and repaint. And basically, any of the low cost stuff to develop in a quick executable plan. My preference would be that, you know, obviously the like Center Depot, Stafford would be the first priority. But but especially when it comes to moving those, you know, sight lines, et cetera, or additional signage over at Brookfield, Stafford. You know, that that we could do that as well. So that would could just be a motion simply to say, Andrew, go make it happen. Or at least give us a plan that we could potentially talk around funding, even out of free cash or something else, that we can make this happen much sooner than later. So that's, so that's one idea for at least the first motion, or not at all. I mean, I'm all ears.
And well, if if we can include in that motion, I don't think I could repeat your whole motion, but that that would.
I can't repeat it.
That we work on it, try to get it implemented, installed by fall.
Yeah, I think ASAP would be a great way to put it.
Yeah, I mean, they, maybe they could do it in, yeah, fall is probably still pushing it, but.
Still, something.
The point is that, yeah, we're aggressive on it.
Move ahead, just.
So, so what I'm hearing the motion is that we would instruct Andrew to work with DPW and obviously after we get Jeff's memo, to put a four way stop sign in, increase visibility lines. Again, we're talking Center Depot and, you know, Stafford first. You know, obviously do whatever we can over at Brookfield and Stafford as well. But really get this done as quick, at least develop a plan for our review that we can get this done as quickly as possible. So that's, so that's the motion I hear. Second, second of discussion?
Second.
Second of discussion. David, that was just basically, I tried to paraphrase for you, but that's kind of where we're going.
Yeah, and I'm fine with as soon as possible. We have to understand the highway superintendent and the highway department have a certain amount of funds and scheduled project improvements that are already sure on the schedule. And I don't think, you know, every project can be done quickly. So I think ASAP, if they do it by June, great, October, great, as soon as they can get to.
Further discussion on this part? Here we go, no, I was in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That is unanimous and as legacies go, if this board did nothing else over the past year, this would be a nice one. Now, the second part is, Andrew, can you work with, I know Jeff, I don't know if it's through you or whomever, again, with the board's pleasure, to figure out what Mass DOT did and when? And whether we need to reengage for some type of study? And Jeff, I I think it just, it's a bit nebulous at the moment, kind of like where like where we stand and what's been done. So I think we just want to figure out with with your assistance if that's all right.
It's happened within the last three years because Bill was on the board at the time.
So I I believe that it was engaged during Max's.
His interim tenure. Bill's first or second year on the board?
I'll say yes.
Yeah, so I, cause I I remember coming in and that being basically, this is, this was done.
Right, because we had the traffic commission at the time.
I thought it was previous board.
I'm sure it was done previous as well, but honestly, we'll get it figured out. Basically, to determine next steps on a go forward to say, do we need to reengage? And really, for those at home, we're talking around reengaging for potentially additional funding, right, Jeff? That's really kind of what we're talking about?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's exactly right. Because you don't want the Mass DOT or the regional planning agency to say they agree. It's a worthy project.
Yep, thanks, Jeff. Any questions from the audience?
No questions, but hallelujah.
Alright.
I mean, I've been vocal for years about this stuff, so this is very, very good news. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, so without that, do we have any other questions for Jeff or people online? Well done. Jeff, seriously, awesome job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff. Good night, Jeff, thanks again. Jeez, Andrew, I gotta change my review now to get credit on this one.
They specifically said that you didn't, you didn't save lives on Center Depot.
Technically, you wanted us to go through June, it's not June, it's not June yet, so we had to hold off on the evaluations.
Landif, alright, next up, again, that's actually great news. Honestly, that makes me feel good. I mean, there's a lot of times where like a board can take action that's executable, that says, this is gonna help people.
And it happens in a lifetime.
Yeah, like honestly, this is one of those times and is he, you know, you guys were here when it happened.
Wait, do we have to discuss how to pay for it?
Oh, come on, man, don't, don't, don't be down.
There's no, there's no grinding or painting and putting a pole in the ground.
Did you see all the prices?
Don't start. Alright, next up, we're doing under new business subsection four, the town administrator review. So for those at home, what we have done is basically there are seven categories. Board relations, personnel, financial management, general management, community relations, interdepartmental relations, and the completion of the board of selectmen FY 22 goals and objectives. The board of selectmen were in receipt of a memo from Andrew about a month or two ago, whatever it was. Basically saying, hey, here's what I've done, here have been my successes, here are things that I need to work on, et cetera, et cetera. So now as part of the annual review process, not only contractually, but it's, I think it's important that the board give feedback to Andrew on how he's doing. And also basically say, alright, these are things that we as a board want you to concentrate on. So it's a nice check base, much like we all have annual reviews, if if not more, that work. Now, quite honestly, it can be uncomfortable because when we're having our reviews at work, we're doing it behind closed doors. Public officials don't have that luxury. So this is just the nature of the beast and the life we choose. I'm not saying it's right, but it's the reality when it comes to transparency.
That's why our town administrator does not have a license to carry.
So the other thing to note is that, so we were all ranked upon these, we all individually ranked in these seven categories from one to five. One being basically, look, you really did a terrible job. Five being, I'm, to, you know, use my Mass accent, you did a wicked good job, we're really happy. Some might argue you really couldn't do it any better. Three is average, and there's nothing wrong with average. As my boss once told me, I'm not gonna give you a raise for doing your job because I pay you to do your job. So to me, three is average, it's commendable, there's nothing wrong with it. So that was at least the scale that I used, or at least the thought process based upon what Lynn had provided to us. So we have the quantitative numbers in a spreadsheet, but let me defer to the board on this. Do you want to go category by category? Or would you rather just go person, individual by individual and call out specific items, knowing that Andrew's gonna get a physical copy, which is public record by the way for everybody, for everybody? But David?
I'm happy to go person by person, I'm happy to go first.
Cool, Patsy, Steve, thoughts?
No, I'm fine with that too.
Great, right, second speaker, you have the floor.
So like Mr. Borowski, I do agree that one score on my scaling would be, we have to have a conversation. And then maybe follow by a conversation with HR. The five, the opposite, Andrew, to me, the five means perfection. There is no room for improvement, flawless. And I think it's almost impossible for anyone to ever say there's no room for improvement for any of us. Three, what Mr. Borowski turns as as average, I guess I could go with that, but for me, basically three meant you're doing a good job. To Mr. Borowski's point, this is the job we expect you to do, you're doing it well, thank you. Two and four then are below average, or you're doing more than expected, more, better than average. And the first one, for board relations, I gave Andrew a four. I think he's worked very, very hard and done a very good job of establishing good relations and improving relations with the other boards in town. I gave him a four for that. That's Mr. Cronus' phone. For personnel.
Steve gets a two on board relations.
He gets a two. For personnel, I gave Andrew a three, good. And and really, I expect that will change, and only because Andrew is only half involved in this. I think HR is the other half of of this. And that is, I believe he does a good job here, but I think we need to pay more attention going forward on our processes for background checks, hiring, promotion, terminations. And I think, like I said, this is something that Andrew would have to work with HR on. This is not solely on Andrew. Other than that particular thing, which is why I still gave him, he does a good job. I think that's a workshop that we should at some point have with Andrew, I think, and HR. Financial management, I gave Andrew another four here, he's done an outstanding job. Same thing with general management, another four, outstanding job. For community relations, that was an area I did give Andrew a three. And I point out in the notes that the only reason he has a three for a good job and not four, which is what he's mostly gotten, is beyond his control because of COVID, we've canceled events, we've canceled gatherings. There's just so many opportunities for Andrew to actually be out within the community, he wasn't given. So it's, I I can't build him up, but I can't ding him for it either. He's done a good job and I expect as we are reopening our community, Andrew's gonna be a four there as well. For interdepartmental relations, again, I gave Andrew another four. I think he's, he's just very good when it comes to working with all the various departments in town. And and I'm sorry, but running trial, he's a great job. And then for completion of our goals and objectives, I again gave him a four, keeping in mind when I said about fives. I gave you a four for this as well, above average. He continues to do well in working with the limited resources we give him and the limited guidance we give him, which is sometimes very vague and disjointed, but Andrew makes it work.
Thank you, select person singer. I'm gonna give you a chance to respond to the very.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Let's go select person Cronus.
Okay.
And again, feel free to say as much or as little as you like.
Yeah, well, I I agree with David's points on a lot of things, except there were, there were a few things that I did give Andrew a five for. First one, with board relations. Andrew, Andrew does a very good job at board relations. He's very helpful, he always takes time to explain a topic, his opinion. And no matter when I ever call him, he always answers the phone. So I I gave you a five for that one, Andrew.
He takes your calls?
Personnel, personnel, Andrew does a very good job with personnel issues from what I can see. He takes them on in a very timely manner, he doesn't let anything fester. Financial management, oh, I gave you a four on that one, and personnel. Financial management, I gave you a five. I think you you excel in that. And I can actually tell you enjoy it, because you're very well versed on it. General management, I gave Andrew a four. In his short time here, Andrew has developed a keen sense of how the town runs. And a keen sense of how the taxpayers may view a potential issue or a project. And you've picked that up in a very quick period of time. I think you've got a good handle on the, um, community relations, I gave you a four on that one. I think you do a good job. You attend whatever you can, and much like what David said, and you've, and you've got a busy home life. I would, I would only suggest, um, on Old Home Day next year, you don't run the road race. So you can actually attend Old Home Day, hang out there with people.
And don't miss that attack.
Or start training, or start training now, right? Inter, inter, interdepartmental relations, it it seems very well. I believe he's very well respected by other departments. I gave you a four on that one as well, and I gave you a four on board of selectmen goals and objectives. You you met or you met or exceeded them. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, select person Cronus. Vice Chair Redlock.
So I'll make it easy, I I have four across the board. Which in, and I have the same thing, five is perfect and that that's almost impossible. I do want to commend the overall, um, culture attitude in this town hall is so much better. It wasn't like this and I talked to a lot of the employees personally and, you know, just regular business stuff. And everybody's so much happier and that's, that's huge. just regular business stuff, and everybody's so much happier, and that's, that's huge. Um, you know, happy employees, need better customer service for our residents and, um, so that's huge. And number two, the, the community relation piece, social media is so much better. Website is even looking a little bit better. I really hate that website. It's getting there, but, um, just the amount of Facebook and signage and and information that's out there for the public, it's easier to to get. I know we still have a little bit ways to go, but it's such a huge vast improvement, um, from where it was before. So good, thank you.
Alright, so I don't wanna be redundant, but I will say that I gave Andrew's, uh, Andrew fours across the board with two notable exceptions. Uh, under board relations, I gave him a five, and I don't often read verbatim, but I'd like to. So I find TA goals to be very easy to work with. He keeps the board informed of any noteworthy items between meetings and is very responsive to inquiries, including in his office off hours. Moreover, he works collaboratively, knowing that we act as his board of directors, and he has to find a happy medium in reacting to five very distinct personalities. Andrew never oversteps his authority, but instead looks for the consensus of the board before executing a plan. I'm especially pleased when he offers forth multiple recommendations and asks how the BOS would like to proceed. Uh, the other five I gave him, again, similar to Steve, was around financial management, in that I find that's one of Andrew's strengths. Even in difficult times, he's presented innovative solutions to budgeting and has prepared detailed analyses when requested on specific items. I would expect us to continue with our future growth and to continue to request strategic direction from the BOS on how revenue ought to be allocated amongst competing resources. So, on a more personal note, I, and I'm not politicking, so this is my last official meeting of this term. And I think when you look back on your three years here, that you say, what could I have done differently, what mistakes that I've made, and you know, here and there, but the one that's glaring to me is that Andrew wasn't my first choice. And that is a huge mistake. And that's something that it just, I can openly admit to those at home, to members of this board, people in the audience, I messed that call up. Andrew's done a fantastic job. I mean, we've worked collaboratively this past year, it, you know, me and, me being chair, you know, obviously, he, you know, he he running the show. And he's been so fantastic to work with. The only thing I'd say is like additional goals for next year, that, uh, you know, even with all this new development occurring, much like you have, you know, I'd like to see, you know, conservative operational budgets or continued conservative operational budgets, knowing the number of capital needs that are required. Um, also, and this is not your fault, but I'm gonna challenge you with it. I'd like to see better communication between the school and municipal sides of the house. So, uh, we're always on the same page and we don't have surprises. Again, it's not surprising to anyone who's been following that I was not happy that I was surprised, uh, when I was surprised that Shepherd Hill was accepted at the MSBA, and that's not your fault. Uh, but, yeah, you can do a help with that, so, you know, after now saying my, my regret for not hiring you, I can say that, again, I can happily say, uh, that it was a horrible mistake. But what I am gonna do is put this up on the screen, cause I'm an Excel geek, I, is it sharing? So what I'm trying to do, and I'm fairly miserably at it, is put up the spreadsheet. Oh, look at this. Uh, as always, Andrew's more technical than me. Basically, just giving an idea of kind of where the individual board members ranked. Again, Basha, uh, will provide that privately, uh, but again, these are all public documents. We can either post them or you can request them uh, around our, uh, around our notes. So overall, uh, you had an above four average, uh, going across the board. Um, you know, you're obviously within board relations and financial management, you did, you know, very, very well. Under personnel and community relations, a little bit before four, but also fantastic, and fours across the board. I think anytime you have a TA or TM that, again, has five type A personalities, um, that you have to cater to, and that any, anytime that you can rank above a four, it's not just commendable, it's fantastic. So, you know, at least for me in closing, I'm, I I couldn't be happier that you're here. So, anyway, well done.
Thank you. No, I I appreciate it.
Anything that you want in?
No, and, no, I appreciate the the feedback too, and glad there's some areas that I, that you guys feel that I can improve upon, you know. I'd like, you know, at some point, I'd like to try to get them all to fives, but I know that's idealistic.
Have you, have you met him?
That may have to be my part again. I may be my part in getting to Andrew.
No, but, uh, you know, let's, let's build on this, let's, let's get some strategic goals together for next year, and let's do, let's get this even better and try to match, ma- match the, um, the thing, or the, uh, the scores from this year's that we can show improvement. You know, it's, it's really, as I say, it's a team effort from the people that work here, the people I work with, the board, all of us, I mean, it all goes in, it all goes into this. It's all the success of the community, so, thank you, thank you very much.
Andrew, unlike Bill, I don't have to have regrets. You were my high school.
Ah, it's fantastic. Uh, Nina, Izzy, anything you want, that you guys want in? It's, it's okay if you don't, I'm just.
Why give you fives?
Politically, Basha, for the, for the, you know, helping the score.
Nina wants to know why there isn't a six in the score.
We should have called your mom and, uh, and had her like roar.
This story dropped, oh, by the way, this is out of town.
How you like me now? Alright, if you wanna go back to the other one. Alright, thank you for that, Andrew, and for the board, thank you for your due diligence. Again, if you haven't passed in, uh, the physical copies, if you could get those to Andrew, uh, technically via policy. Uh, Patsy and I are supposed to come up with a summary if the board wants one, we can.
Do we have to add Barrow scores in?
I think we should, let's put it that way. At least for now, that, that like, you know, this is the public, but the, the public one, but when they, but when she provides them, we can like update and then also put it on the.
It's terrible.
Oh, this is perfect. Thank you. But yes, we will absolutely take care of it. Alright, alright, now that we've done vetting Andrew, we're done with his nonsense. Uh, let me see, committee reports have none, we did policy, goals and objectives, we can actually start talking about those again, post-election. Uh, student select person, I'm gonna go with, no, actually, I'm gonna go with Izzy first this time.
I always do that.
I know. Fine, Nina. You know what, no, you don't blame her, I'm not dealing with her.
I was like gonna go to Nina and then you always pick.
I know, he's like, Neezy. Izzy, Izzy, Izzy.
You, you gotta keep.
I'll go.
It's politics, keep people guessing.
Exactly.
Go ahead.
Alright, so starting off strong with National Honor Society Krispy Kreme doughnuts. I personally bought myself three boxes. So we're pre-selling Krispy Kreme doughnuts, which is ten dollars, um, a dozen, and the pre-s, um, sale ended yesterday, but for me, it was today since I've like the Europe trip and stuff. So the school delivery for these doughnuts is May fifth. And so there's, I believe you can still just donate money to, um, this fundraiser, so that's still available for our community-based projects. So the Shepherd Hill water bottles, so the class of twenty twenty-four, um, wow, twenty twenty-four, okay, will be selling Shepherd Hill water bottles for fifteen dollars. So support the class and get your water bottles and never need a plastic water, water cup again. Um, first come, first served, and that's in room one twenty-three. Um, it's cash or check. Uh, so prom tickets, so the prom tickets are still on sale, and you can get prom tickets in Miss McGreal's room. That's near the library and tickets are seventy-five dollars each. So if you wanna bring a guest to prom, just make sure you fill out the guest form, which is in the main office. And you need to fill this form out before you get a ticket. And the theme this year for the prom is Enchanted Forest, so that's nice. Our favorite part of the year, so we have our final exams. So, May nineteenth through the twenty-seventh, um, is final exam week, and I can't wait not to do it because, not to brag, but I have all A's, guys, so I don't have to take it. So, but I do have to sit there for two hours. Anyways, so final exams will be administered during A block. Seniors are required to attend the full day of school, um, May nineteenth and May twentieth, so the twentieth is our last day of school, but you still have to come in for these exams, just for the first A block, and then you can leave. Um, so on Monday, May twenty-third, students will be allowed to depart on the conclusion of the barbecue. And then beginning on Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, students have to fulfill all classroom obligations and have returned the signed parental permission form to leave after their A block exam. Where am I going? So, the Europe trip, so students just returned back from the Europe trip last, um, yesterday evening. So we went to Italy and France, and we visited some major cities such as Venice, Florence in Italy, and Nice, Paris, and Monaco in France. So we went to a lot of historical, um, monuments and buildings and chateaus in Paris, such as Versailles, and that was a really great experience, and I wish I could do it again. So it was an amazing experience overall and great trip. So student council, we, our school, Shepherd Hill, we did Powderpuff, um, for the girls in November, and it was super fun. And so during our fall season sports, we had girls volleyball and all the guys wanted to play. So now student council is making Powderbuff, which is basically just like a boys volleyball game. And I, I don't know, everyone was really interested in that. So that's happening Thursday, um, at five o'clock to seven PM. And so make sure you guys make your teams of six or ten and get the money to Miss Agonis as soon as possible, since it's next Thursday. So some upcoming senior events, so May twentieth is the seniors' last day of high school, and that's eighteen days away. Uh, that's, yeah, it's eighteen days away.
But he's counting.
Yes, he's counting, eighteen school days. Um, May twenty-third is our senior banquet taking place at the basketball barbecue. Excuse me, barbecue, not banquet, which is taking place on the basketball courts. And then May twenty-sixth is our senior trip to Kimball Farm. And then May thirty-first is our graduation rehearsal. And some upc- some, the other activities which are, um, in June, I'll just announce in the later on meetings, cause it's in June. That's it.
Thank you, Nina, appreciate it. Alright, Izzy, you're up.
Alright, so just a couple reoccurring announcements. Um, AP testing is still taking place next week. Little moment of silence for all of us taking those tests. Um, the NHS induction ceremony is also still on May third at six PM. Um, each inductee is allowed two guests, and tickets cost five dollars per person. So get your permission slips and money into Mr. Estoros by the end of this week, cause that's next week, so. Um, May sixth is an early release for all students, as well as the senior prom. Our theme is also enchanted forest. Seems to be common this year.
Seems like you're copying us.
Well, neither one of you submitted a scholarship application, so yeah, you are copying one of them.
May seventeenth and eighteenth is math MCAS for underclassmen. And if you're not already aware, because we have been closed because of COVID, um, the Miniman restaurant and salon are both open for business, so come in and get a delicious meal and fabulous hairdo.
Really?
Um, the fifteenth annual Bay Path Education Foundation Benefit Golf Tournament to fund student scholarships and teacher grants is on May twenty-first at one PM. And if you are interested in participating in that, further information and signup resources can be found on our school website. So, time for my favorite segment, the sports segment. Um, over vacation, the varsity softball team won our three games against Douglas, Auburn, and Bartlett, making us five and two for the season. We play, uh, Worcester Tech on Wednesday at home and BBT on Monday. Uh, the varsity baseball team won four games over break against Key Tech, Assabett, Quaybuck, and Douglas. The boys are now six and one for the season. And they are actually number one in the league right now, so, good job, boys. Um, they play Worcester Tech on Wednesday and BBT on Monday, as well as the girls. Um, the boys varsity lacrosse team plays BBT on Wednesday and Littleton on Thursday. The girls varsity plays BBT on Wednesday as well. So, good luck to all teams having games coming up. And that's about it.
Thank you, Izzy. I look forward to hearing in a very upcoming, quick meeting, um, where both of you plan on going to school next year. So, you know, make sure that you give us that fancy announcement when the time is right. Not tonight, it's a Monday. Alright, uh, let's go down, actually, I'm sorry, any questions for Izzy or Nina?
No, no, um, congratulations to both of you. It's a, wow, a big year, seniors, right?
I know.
I, I did wanna bring up one point though, cause Izzy reminded me of it, is Old Home Day this year. The fireworks are going to be at Bay Path, just so that people know that, in case they haven't seen it on.
That's right.
Like, like in the years past, the food trucks and the music and all that stuff is gonna be up there, not, not, not by the police station.
Hopefully, it's not on our softball field, because last year they put a bonfire on our field, so hopefully they keep it all cleaned up.
I have to.
I do too.
Any other questions for Izzy or Nina?
Nope.
Cool. Andrew, we have anything for the TO report?
Yeah, uh, just a few, a few brief things. So, um, back when the, uh, part of the FY twenty-two capital budget, we had appropriated some money at special time meeting to address some of the HVAC issues at the police station. So currently, the police station is kind of a patchwork of just like the, uh, duckless mini splits and the central system and offices that have been built into previously void spaces. Um, so we are trying to kind of figure out the best way forward to, to, um, address the HVAC system. Um, also, considerably different building code requirements from the nineties as there are now in dealing with, um, prisoners and and so on. So, we've, uh, solicited a proposal from Time Bond to just do a brief feasibility system analysis on what the current system is and give us some options for repair and replacement costs. So, as I get that update from them on the feasibility, I'll give you guys kind of like the updated price based off of that feasibility. So, more to come, but more infrastructure challenges ahead. Um, and then just, uh, to update the board, that Senator Fatman had come to visit the Charlton Fire Department, uh, just to take a firsthand look at the existing conditions. And just noted at the time that the continued advocates advocacy for a, uh, public safety facilities program at the statewide level, which has been kind of kicked out, kicked around for years and maybe gaining some traction, but we'll see. That's what I got.
Selectman Singer, I could see you smirking.
If, if I may, if the, if the board would support me in this, I would like to ask the board, if we could ask Andrew to reach out to Senator Fatman, to extend a personal invitation to come to Charlton and introduce himself to the residents he now represents. I know that most, uh, senators and reps who have been affected by redistricting have known since last fall where their new districts were, and most of them have already been spending a lot of time in their new districts, getting to know their communities. Sadly, we haven't seen Senator Fatman. He didn't come to our last time meeting. He, no one in town has seen him, and I think this town, just because we're red and he's red, don't take us for granted. That said, I think, uh, I would like to ask, if we, if you approve it, to have Andrew send him a personal invitation to come to a selectmen's meeting, to introduce himself to the people who live in Charlton. And he's more than welcome to attend our town meeting that our other state reps, uh, have attended.
Got no objection from me. Patsy, Steve? Any objections?
No, no, I have seen him in a couple of things, but not an official.
Me and Stephen Basha saw him at the, at the Grange for a function just a couple weeks ago.
It'd be nice if people knew about it. Didn't come to town meeting, wasn't at Old Home Day. If he came to town, no one knew. The residents didn't know, town employees didn't know.
I think Singer fired up tonight.
I don't like Charlton being taken for granted.
Well, I'm sure Senator Fatman will heed your call and introduce himself to the board selectman formally, and I look forward to partnering with him in the future. Any, Andrew, anything else in your TO report? Andrew, just a real quick question, uh, this also for the folks at home in the board, uh, cause I was thinking through this after watching the Dudley Board of Selectmen, uh, this has about, about the school budget. Um, long story short, if, if the four point oh three gets lowered, cause, cause we've budgeted for the four oh three. Is, is the assumption that we will move money from this, from the school account or something else, if you will, to stabilization or something else come fall?
Yeah, I would either go to stabilization or operation, or existing operational deficiencies. It essentially just sets that bottom line budgetary number, and then knowing that we wouldn't need that capacity, um, we could devise it elsewhere.
I know it's a hypothetical, and we were at a big discussion, uh, this, the board, uh, at the Dudley Board of Selectmen meeting, so, anyway, we, we have our site covered, let's put it that way. Uh, any other business, unknown to time of posting. Anybody got anything? Just again, very briefly, not politicking, I just wanna say thank you to the board, uh, for your trusted chair this past year. It's officially my last, uh, formal meeting as chair, assuming no write-in. I hope to, uh, go back to anonymity and probably sit where Selectman Singer is, uh, come next term.
As far away from me as possible.
Uh, next meeting announcements, we're actually meeting with FinCom as a reminder tomorrow night briefly to give our recommendations on, again, we, we spoke about it before, Article twenty-one, the Senior Center Citizens Petition.
Is that, is that, that's all Zoom, right?
It can be, or it's in person. I'll probably show up.
We're gonna do.
But either way is fine, that's because I'm sure there'll be some people Zoom, so we'll be taking roll call votes, uh, no matter what.
Is it six?
Uh, six thirty, I think. Is it six thirty? Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Yep. Alright, uh, and then our next BOS regular scheduled meeting, believe it or not, is actually May tenth. So election May seventh, we will reorg on May tenth. And then, uh, whoever is actually nominated as chair and accepts and voted in will actually run that meeting. So, uh, that's, I'm, I'm also breaking with tradition on that, and because that person will be the new chair, it will not be me. And he, and he or she can, can, can run the meeting.
You just can't wait to get out.
I, if nominated, will not run, if elected, it will not serve. Um, but anyway, outside of that, Andrew, anything else? Uh, Mr. Howard, Art, you got anything? You, you guys good?
Of FinCom tomorrow, are we already going over Article twenty-one or?
Correct, yeah, correct, yeah. We had done, uh, the question those at home is, which article or articles are we doing for the town meeting warrant with, with, with FinCom tomorrow? It's only the new one for the, the, the citizens petition for the senior center. We, we already made votes on the other one, which you'll see, also see in the packets. And it's also in this, uh, tonight's packet as well, if you wanna see it as well.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah, my question was, I came in late, and at the last meeting, uh, you people voted against putting that on the warrant.
Yep.
And what changes?
So, uh, so a question for those at home is, why is these, why is the senior center, uh, purchase or offer on the warrant? So, initially, it was asked of the Board of Selectmen that we sponsor the article. And that would just allow, then that just takes a, a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen. But basically, we're, we're sponsoring it, and some could argue by sponsoring it, you're endorsing it. Um, mine, and at least a, a majority of the board felt at the time that it was not in our best. Um, mine, and at least a, a majority of the board felt at the time that it was not in our best interest to sponsor that article. However, there, there is an alternate path to getting articles on to the warrant. One of them's, it, one of them is a citizens petition. So what ended up happening is that members of the council on aging, uh, not everyone, obviously, uh, and other concerned residents re, uh, worked with bond counsel, our, our, our legal folks, and actually got a citizens petition, uh, to, to, to put it on. And by law, under very, except for very, very rare circumstances, it has to go on the, the warrant.
So the, the underbride, the abridged version, we said no, we weren't, we weren't putting on. Legally, we're obligated to honor a citizens petition, which is what they did. So they put it on, and we had to allow it.
Who, Hemingway with your short, uh?
That's the, that's the abridged version, but we did, we really didn't change our position correctly.
I understood that, because you mentioned that at the last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, so.
My question is, how many names on the petition?
I think there were fourteen that signed it.
Yeah.
I think, I'd only need ten.
It's not a heavy lift to get a citizen, it, it only, the requirement is ten.
In the spring, they need ten signatures. Had it been the fall, they would have needed a hundred.
Yeah. So tomorrow night, meeting with FinCom, both boards individually, will just vote on our recommendation, which obviously isn't binding to anybody, it just gives the town meeting voters an idea around where the respective boards stand. That's all that is.
Oh, that's tomorrow night?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You got it, Mr. Howard. Uh, Art, you got something else?
At, at town meeting, um, when we brought on warrant twenty-one, and it's, uh, a hundred and twenty-three to a hundred and twenty-two in favor of, what happens next?
It would still fail. It's a two-thirds majority.
That, that, that would be my question. That's on your Facebook page, so you can answer for the rest, uh, but it needs two-thirds.
Right. So, so the question is basically, what is the passage for, and I would just say, like, in general, any type of borrowing article at all is always a two-thirds supermajority. So a simple majority doesn't work. And again, this is not a debt exclusion, this is simp, this, this is simple borrowing, but regardless, it needs a two-thirds majority vote, this specific one.
Last question, I promise.
All right, let's do it.
Anything that asks for money at a town warrant, um, need two-thirds?
Yes.
Anything?
No.
If I ask for three hundred dollars for signs for?
Nope, that is a simple majority.
So what, what's the difference between two-thirds and one-half and a dollar?
Basically, if you are borrowing the money because you don't have it, um, it, 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 it requires two-thirds.
If we have the cash on hand to pay for it, we don't need that two-thirds.
Correct.
Is there an account that says how much cash we have on hand at any given point in time?
Stabilization, reserve, uh, capital.
Like my piggy bank at home in my sock drawer, and everything I got in stabilization and reserve and.
That's all of our, I mean, it gets a little tricky. I mean, you're asking a good question, but money that isn't allocated for something goes into, uh, very specific accounts, because in theory, after town meeting, we have X, Y, or Z cash sitting in, sitting in, in, in these accounts for expended bills. But it, but if you, if you think things that are not appropriated, that's things like stabilization. Andrew, you want to do a better job explaining it?
Uh, it's basically that in order for us to get the loan authorization from, um, from any financial institution for, to, to incur debt on a project, it needs a two-thirds vote.
Yeah, so for example, our budget last year was, um, thirty-four point four million, and, and, and we spent thirty-three point two million. Does that mean I have rough, rough one point two million that I could have spent?
It dep, so, some of that money was put in stabilization, others was expended in free cash as part of, um, yeah, uh, in, in, in October. That's why I say, it, what sounds like a very easy question, it gets really complicated when you try to explain it. But basically, anytime that you have to go to the bank and say, hey, I, hey, I need this money for this, it's two-thirds. That's probably the easiest way to say it.
No, that's fair, that's fair.
And then the stabilization fund is, is very important, because it, it affects our bond rating and our ability to borrow money, so we, 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 to drain that for something would be, would be.
We're still building that, right, to our ten percent?
Yeah, well, that's the goal. Yeah, that is both the finance committee and board of selectmen policy.
And hopefully, eventually higher than ten.
Exactly. Cool. Are you good?
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, outside of that, folks, I think we're good. Uh, we have an exec? Thankfully, we do not have an exec.
Oh, I thought we did.
I don't think we do, Andrew.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have motion, I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Patsy. Any discussion? Harry Donald, it's a favor.
Hi.
Propose dashing unanimous. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Drew.